Is there something that I'm missing?
No, the 19th will be heavier.
Because I'm looking at...
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the Tuesday, December 6th, meeting of the Select Board. With me this evening, I have Ellen Rosenfeld, our clerk, Craig Schultz, Vice Chair, Karen Beret de Marzo, our Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director, and Mike Gazinski, our Town Administrator, and I am Erin Underhill, the Chair. The first thing we have on our agenda are some announcements. The first announcement I'm going to make is actually to recognize and say goodbye to Zach Golden. He has worked with Millis Community Media for the last six years, covering a lot of sports and meetings, and he's leaving for a full-time IT position, which is apparently right in his wheelhouse.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure to help out.
Yeah, thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
And you will be missed, for sure.
You've proved to be a technical wizard, so we've come to rely on you. It's hate to see you go in one way, but another way. We're very happy for you to take that next step. So wish you the best.
I was gonna say, big congratulations. I think it's well deserved, and Zach has saved us on more than one occasion when he began to flounder and he came in and said, "Wait a minute." So yes, much appreciated always, Zach. I know you do a lot behind the scenes. They don't even realize how much you've done behind the scenes, but a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And good luck.
Expecting more floundering to come now.
Do you have a cell phone?
I was just gonna say, give me your cellphone number.
You have a hotline.
All right.
Good luck, Zach. Good luck. The next announcement we have is recognition. We're going to recognize Wayne Clacco for the Permanent Building Committee. Wayne, if you could come up, we just want to say a few words for you. Wayne has been on the Permanent Building Committee since its inception, so we're gonna say maybe around 25 years, which is an extraordinarily long time to serve on a board or committee. So that's pretty remarkable to begin with. Wayne worked on a bunch of projects, obviously, including this building that we're in tonight, the library, the police station, the fire station, Clyde Brown, a lot of very large projects that greatly benefited this town. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize you for all those incredible years of service and all of the knowledge that you've brought to the table and helped the town get these great projects completed.
Thank you. I consider myself lucky to have been, to have had the experience to be able to assist the town in this way, and we've accomplished a lot in that period of time. I would say that all of these projects, we tend to look at them kind of as points in time, and you can look at this building back in 1997, when we first talked about whether or not it should be demolished or saved and turned into what it is today. It was a point in time when town offices were on the second floor of the Niagara Hall or in the old train station, and we take it for granted now that this building is where it is here, but the people of the town invested in it in the future. And we don't always think about things in a continuum, but just as a point in time. But when you look at the 25 years that the Permanent Building Committee has been in existence, those people have repeatedly invested in the future of the town. And I would say to you that that work is not done and is ongoing, and the remaining project that I feel pretty strongly about is a new senior center, and the town needs to step up and consider the necessity of investing, just as everybody else did. In fact, the people who would most benefit from the senior center paid for all of those other projects, you know, over this entire period of time. And so I think the Select Board, the Finance Committee, need to coordinate with the members of the Council on Aging and the Permanent Building Committee to develop a program that fulfills those needs and not looks for ways to kick the can down the road. And I think that's what happened at the last election, and I'd like to see those, the project considered and supported by both the Select Board wholeheartedly and the Finance Committee. And so that's my hope. I think that the people that are on the Planning Board and on the, or I'm sorry, the Permanent Building Committee and Select Board and the Finance Committee can work together to put together a project that will kind of address all of the needs in town. So that's my hope. I know that I'm not the only person in town that can accomplish that, and I know that there are others who can step up, and I think that's great and healthy for a community. So I look forward to seeing them accomplish that goal. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say also, Wayne, that I had the great pleasure of working with Wayne on the Permanent Building Committee. I started with the town 14 years ago, and at the time, I needed a little something part-time, and I worked as the Secretary for the Permanent Building Committee, and I learned a lot from Wayne even back then. He ran a very fair meeting. He always listened to what everyone had to say, and I think it was a pleasure to work with you, Wayne, then, and truly, if anyone appreciates it, I appreciate all of the work you've done, and I thank you for that and for sharing your knowledge with us all those years. So truly, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And if I could add, Madam Chair, I mean, in my 30 years of working in municipal government, it is rare to find someone willing to put that amount of time and their expertise into the level that, you know, that Wayne has done, and I think it's a testament to his volunteer spirit and his love for the community, and I think people will get to see that every day in the buildings that are here in the town. So I just want to thank you personally for all your time and effort and expertise that you've done on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next thing on our agenda are some scheduled appointments. So the first appointment we have are for on-call firefighters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you'll see three applications for on-call firefighters with the Fire Department. The Fire Chief has requested, due to a number of resignations and promotions within the department, that their on-call department members have dwindled. They're down approximately five on-call firefighters. Originally, they had 14, they're now down to nine, and they are, the chief is requesting the addition of these three new on-call firefighters. And their names are Timothy Smith, who lives in Millis, Brett Matthews, who's also from Millis, and Ryan Deasy from Norfolk. And so upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, I'd like to appoint all three as on-call firefighters with the Millis Fire Department, and I'm asking for the Board's ratification of those appointments.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion that we ratify Town Administrator's appointment of Timothy Smith, Brett Matthews, and Ryan Deasy as on-call firefighters. Do they need any testing or anything that we contingent on?
Yes.
Yes, it would be a quarry and their required physicals, which I think...
Yeah, physical and drug screening, but it's for the fire, so.
Okay, contingent on the quarry, successful quarry, physical and drug screening or any other required paperwork and testing.
Correct.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Timothy Smith, Brett Matthews, and Ryan Deasy, pending quarry, physical, and drug screen as on-call firefighters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next appointment we have is a Permanent Building Committee member.
Jeremy Stull?
Yes, Jeremy Stull. At the last Permanent Building Committee meeting, some candidates were interviewed, and the Permanent Building Committee voted to recommend Jeremy Stull to fill the empty position on the Permanent Building Committee. Along with that, just as a side note, the Committee also decided to have two additional, what we will call associate members, who are non-official, non-voting members, but will be participating in the meetings as well. So I'd be looking for...
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jeremy Stull to the Permanent Building Committee.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jeremy Stull to the Permanent Building Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And next, we have a snowplow contractor or seasonal workers or both?
Yes, Madam Chair. I know the director is here, if you'd like to speak to the history of this and the appointment before you this evening.
Thank you. So this is an annual rite of getting into the winter season. We appoint snowplow drivers and sidewalk helpers. So this year, I would ask that you appoint Mark Robbins. Mark's been with us, this is his third or fourth year of snowplowing. He will use a DPW truck, and he gets paid out of the personnel plan, under the personnel plan, and he's already completed his physical. He still has to come in to do another quarry check, even though he has worked with us. And I would ask that Michael Cafro, Michael's been cleaning sidewalks at the Town Hall, Police Station, Library for the past three or four years also. We are in need of another person to help us and assist us with, you know, the clearing of the sidewalks. But again, I would ask you to appoint both of them. Both of them will be paid under the, there's already a number in the personnel plan that they get paid. And he also has to do a physical and drug screening.
Right. And they'll be appointed as...
Not, no, no, not a drug screening. He would just do a physical.
So they will be, they'll be considered seasonal workers. You're gonna point them officially as seasonal workers for that timeframe that Jim specified.
Yeah, December 11th through April 1st, 2023.
And again, we're looking for other people. We've advertised on Facebook, we've advertised on the website, we've advertised through the school listserv. It pays really well, but we're having a hard time finding people for during the day. It's more like, most people are working and they want to do it for the overnight, so during the day would be great. Okay?
So Madam Chair, I'm requesting that the Board ratify my appointment of Mark Robbins and Michael Cafro to the position of seasonal snowplow contractor.
I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment of the Town Administrator, Mark Robbins and Michael Cafro, as seasonal snowplow operators, subject to a physical and a quarry.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Mark Robbins and Michael Cafro, pending a physical and quarry, as seasonal workers for the DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKay, you are actually next for Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant Award and Transfer Station.
Thank you. So this is the, we file for a grant every year, and this is the RDP grant, and we're awarded this year $7,200 from the Mass DEP. In the past, we've used those funds to buy, we actually have a compactor purchased, and it's waiting in a shed somewhere, but we're waiting for ever so as to, we're just waiting for the electrical socket, and we've been waiting for almost nine months for that. We just, no one can get one. So once we get that, I think if you go to the transfer station, you can see that it's a cement pad that was paved. That's where the compactor will go, and that will take paper and cardboard. So I did, I know we're gonna have just a brief discussion, so that's, you know, the grant is $7,200. Most of the funds that we have on hand are upwards of almost $50,000 that have been saving over the years, and that will pay for the, you know, for that compactor. I did give you a copy of what these funds actually can be paid for. I had talked to the Chair several times about maybe looking at some remodel at the transfer station. The transfer station hasn't been remodeled since probably the day it was opened. The only thing that has changed is we used to have a trailer truck that we used to back up into a hole, and the trash used to get thrown in, and we put a railing up there. And we did make that handicapped accessible, because if you look at the railing and then you go into the middle of it, there is a gate that can be open, that anybody can open the gate and throw their trash into it. And I think with the paper and cardboard, that'll alleviate most people, when you bring the paper and cardboard, you step up almost more than two feet to get into the container to throw the papers away. So we think that that will alleviate that. The biggest hazard is over at the recycling area. We have to stand up, some people can reach over, but you know, if you're an elderly person, you have to stand up on a cement pad. So we are looking at somehow, if we get rid of the cinder block wall, and then maybe if we put a regular cement retaining wall there that could be thinner in size, that would bring the compactor closer, and the person, it will be closer to the, you know, lifting up and throwing it in there. I think people like the little, if you go there, you know, there's a little container that once they're, you know, it's there occasionally, and it's easier to throw the stuff over that. The other one, you have to reach up. And if we have to, you know, purchase more of it, we can buy, use this money to purchase, even install the cement, you know, retaining wall or purchase new containers to help that out. We did look at compactor for crushing the glass and the plastics, and when we do that, it would be absolutely worthless to, for us to sell. It would cost us to get rid of it. And the glass, if it goes in a regular compactor, it jams up the works, and you can't use it for, because that's actually, we're gonna use it for that instead of the paper and cardboard, but we were told that it wasn't a good idea. So I did talk to the DPW Superintendent, you know, it's something that he believes that, you know, they can do, because they put all the cement pads all around there. So he will look at, you know, the retaining wall. We may need funds. The biggest fear that we are, and I talked about this with the Town Administrator and Karen today, is that depending on what we do, and if we hire outside somebody to come in, we would have to make the entire transfer station handicapped accessible. In making the whole station handicapped accessible, it would just be way too expensive. Transfer station is self-funding. It's one of those that, you know, you pay, you know, for the transfer station bags, we pay for whatever the sticker cost is, and that usually costs for the full-time employee to get rid of the trash and the recyclables and everything else. So there's really not, I mean, not a full burden on the taxpayers of Millis. It does self-fund itself. But we will look in, more into it, you know, into the safety issues that we have and report back, you know, what we think of the cost is, and if we need funding from, in the May Town meeting, then we'll, you know, we'll ask for it that way.
Just for some background, somebody came to me during one of my office hours and had mentioned that they had taken a fall at the transfer station, talked about a couple areas of concern. So the DPW Director and I discussed, and he's addressed some of that already. This is an older person who is handicapped, and I personally would be interested in seeing what it would take to make it handicapped accessible, because I think it should be accessible. So I wanted to have, you know, start some kind of a discussion about this in preparation for the spring, just to see what, you know, what we could do, what we might be looking at, just so it'd be safer and accessible for anybody.
And I would encourage anybody, if they can't get out of their car, I mean, there's an attendant there all the time, you know, wait, beep the horn until the attendant comes, and then, you know, these guys will be more than happy to help anybody out. We do have the senior tax write-off person, Mark Robbins. He will be starting, and he's a great help, and I think that this person that we, you know, we've talked to, he always helps us, so he'll be back starting, I think, the Sadi or the following Sadi to help people.
I think that the recycling area is the concern. I think the rest of it is relatively accessible, but that recycling one is difficult.
It's tough.
Yeah.
I'm kind of amazed that it doesn't have to be handicapped accessible. I'm sitting here, and I don't want to say it.
It's like one of those grandfather things, if you don't touch it.
Yeah. That's the reason, yeah.
All right. Don't do any repair.
As soon as we start, then he's right. We do have to do it all, but correct, the right thing to do is to make it, right, exactly. But the right thing to do, obviously, is make it accessible. But I know, it's, yeah.
At some point, though, the more money you put into it, it's not feasible anymore, because you can't afford to run it, then you just move on to, everybody in town has to pay for garbage service or trash service.
Still the best thing in town. Best price in town.
It's definitely the best deal in town.
I'm actually disappointed about the paper compactor, because I have gotten throwing the Leach Brothers bag all the way into the back.
Manny Dolan, I would, he'll come back to haunt us all for...
Scared me into doing it, right?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. McKay, you are...
I've gone too far.
You're next again.
Went to paving.
One more.
Nope, you're next.
Discuss the paving plan for the winter.
Okay, so this is just a brief discussion. Before we invest any money into this, so everything's done, I know what we have left over. So after the Chapter 90 funding and the WAP, the WRAP, Winter Recovery Program, we have $38,000 left out of that. But we also have the $500,000 that was just given at this May Town meeting, and we still have $160,000 that was left over from, so it's about $680,000 that we have on hand. And I'd like to start working on something over the winter, because it's cheaper to get, you know, the engineering out there. You know, I talked to Mr. Carter, and, you know, he'd be able to give us a better price if he works in the winter, because it's, you know, to keep somebody on, it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
So the idea that, you know, and I proposed during the Town meeting was that we put a sidewalk, extend the sidewalk, first on Pleasant Street, that was all paved. It won't, this sidewalk will not interfere with any of the paving that was just done. And we just finished all that, the paving, the driveways have been done. We purposely didn't put the fog lines on there, because we knew we were gonna be working on the driveways, and it was too cold to put them out. But for the people there, we will put the fog lines back in, you know, next spring. The fog lines are the white lines on the, on the side of the road. So the sidewalk there, it's approximately, I think it's like 700 feet, that we would finally connect Village Street to Main Street. And in doing that, we would also replace the rest of the sidewalks up to Primavera. We'd put some sort of curb there. I'd love to look at maybe, you know, a granite curb, but I just don't, I don't think the cost is gonna be for that. So that'd be one. And in the second phase, we would look at finally, you know, doing Plain Street. And in replacing Plain Street, we've looked, I talked to Mike, and we, I met him out there myself, Dave, and we think that's gonna have to be completely reclaimed. We don't think we're gonna be able to mill it, it's too far gone. There's two, the last time it was done, there was two layers of chip sail that was put there, and once you start ripping that up, that's all oil base, it's, it'll be messy. So in doing that, we would also replace the sidewalks on Plain Street, the side that already has the sidewalks. We would look at installing a new sidewalk on the gas station side on Main Street up to the high school entrance. If you look there, believe it or not, there is a sidewalk almost three quarters of the way, but it's been overgrown and ripped up, and that's good for walking routes for kids to get to the school. And I would ask, as part of this design, so we don't lose, we would extend a sidewalk on Spring Street, and it would be on the side of Plain to Village Street, because there's already a sidewalk on Village, and that would connect it, and again, that would be a perfect walking route, because Bow Street and all that's in there, you know, that development and people, kids can walk, they are walking to school, so I mean, right now, they're walking in the middle of the street. Not sure what cost we're gonna have, I mean, it's $600,000. We do have Chapter 90 funding, we usually get, that usually comes in around $280,000, but we won't get that till July 1st. So how we, I would like to get it designed and bid and put out that we can start chip away at most of this during early spring, you know, during early May to get it done. And then we'll go back, and, you know, there's a couple of streets that need to be done, you know, we know that Walnut Street's one of them, and a couple of sections of Village that, you know, everything needs to be done, but we still have a list. So what I want to know is, is that of your interest? I don't want to, you know, start sending Mike out there, because once he starts engineering it, it's gonna, we are gonna deplete some of those costs, and if that's not what the Boards...
Yeah. I thought there was a complete street or something grant for $400,000 that we're applying for, and it was perfect for sidewalks. I mean, it was kind of the idea behind it. I love the idea of the design and all that, but I'd like to, as much as I want to build sidewalks, if I can wait a year and get $400,000, okay?
It's in there, and that, we would try to build that into it. So Bader's already completed that, and we're gonna give you that presentation the second week of, we still have to design it all. So this is, it still has to be designed. So the $400,000, I mean, the chief was in on this survey, and we had many areas that, and it's a really good presentation, and I think everyone's gonna be pleased at what they see when it's presented.
Yeah, because I'm in favor of using this money for the design work right now, but if we're gonna get 400 that's exclusively sidewalk-oriented, I'd put as much towards roads as I can out of this money.
You'll see that we spent that $400,000 10 times over and over.
I assumed you would, but...
And over again.
I'm in favor of the plan, but I'm also biased, because I happen to live in one of those areas, so I will say that right out front, but...
I don't think that, those plans were well in advance before you got...
It was before me. Okay, good. It's before me, so it's good.
I understand your concern.
If anyone accuses you, yes, isn't that true? But yeah, no, it sounds like a good plan.
Facebook is a mean thing, and they'll post, he paved right up to his driveway. Literally, right up to his driveway.
Including the driveway.
Yeah.
Exactly. Sounds good to me, though.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a plan.
Jim, I'm sorry, when did you say you're gonna come back with the complete streets? Is that January?
It would be in your first, be it first or second bump.
All right, I'll just put a police hold if word, I couldn't remember to do that. All right, awesome.
Okay.
And I'll be back later.
Yeah, in a minute.
All right, and next, we have the Police K-9 Unit Program update.
Really expect him to see a dog in here at some point.
I know, right?
I lobbied, I lobbied.
I don't know. We all lobbied for a dog or two. We said at least Bruno.
Has anybody ever seen Bruno?
I don't, but...
We got nothing, all right.
I need everybody to pay attention if you want that right now.
The chief wanted the spotlight, if you want to share it with Bruno, we understand.
We'll use him at the next town meeting.
Well, thank you all for allowing us to come in. It's been a few months since we acquired Nitro, the Patrol K-9. But before I get going, I know in the past, it's come up about having a grant writer for various departments, and case in point, tonight's presentation just reaffirms why we don't need one for our department, because nobody knows the Police Department better than the folks that work there. And in the last year and a half, we've expanded the number of people that have the ability to write grants and have been successful with it. Right now, we have five, a total of five. So within the last six months, you know, Sergeant Maxson got $7,000 for Safe Roadways. That's gonna be able to purchase some LED signs that you see around town. He got $3,000 for a portable breathalyzer. Officer Roy got $12,000 from the Governor's Highway Safety Bureau. So they run initiatives quarterly throughout the year for traffic enforcement. That's like booking a ticket, impaired driving, distracted driving. And Officer Sullivan, who's here tonight, he wrote the grant for the Patrol K-9, which was through the Stanton Foundation. That came out to $46,000, which paid for the dog, the training equipment, and backfill while he was at the academy with Nitro. Acquired $5,000 for Nitro's certification to be a narcotics dog as well. And also with Officer Sullivan is Officer Foresight, and he recently got awarded a grant. I'll let him get into that later on. And Detective Gonzalez has been working to draft a grant to fund traffic cams in the areas of... traffic cams in the areas of the intersections that have been problematic for, for our community. And he's doing a great job with that. All those, in addition to the standard grants that we've been getting, which is roughly forty-two thousand dollars a year from State 911 that funds the equipment inside the cruisers, to the Burn Justice Grant. So we have a lot of people that have been contributing to, to make the department better and better serve the community. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I'll introduce Officer Sullivan to give you a, a brief on K-9 Nitro.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you said, I'm Officer Sullivan. I've been lucky enough to be partnered with K-9 Nitro. I picked him up last day of February. We started our academy March twenty-third, I believe, and that was fourteen weeks. Uh, right now he is a patrol dog, so that means that he's trained to track suspects. Obviously criminal apprehension, the bite work, the fun stuff that everyone gets to see, like on Cops and all that. He does evidence searches, so pretty much anything with a human odor on it, he's able to locate. Like if, like if a suspect throws something into the woods or grassy area to try to hide it, he'll be able to locate that. As well as we do like obedience work as part of the academy. January second, we start our narc, narcotics schools, which will be another six weeks. At the end of patrol school, we did receive a national certification from the North, North American Police Working Dog Association. And that wasn't just like a participation award. That was, we were tested by a member of that organization. So as Chief said, we were awarded thirty-seven thousand, the initial Stanton Foundation grant, which covered a lot of the costs for K-9 Nitro. I mean, equipment added up really quickly. We need all sorts of leashes and all that, but also the outfitting of the cruiser to be able for him to stay in while we're on shift. Sorry. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, I worked with Chief to create the Milis Police Working Dog Fund, which is a revolving fund for costs for equipment, vet bills, food, or any unforeseen, you know, if for, you know, the horrible chance that he does get injured, to cover the costs of that. He graduated at the July first. We finished the academy. We've had nine deployments, which I've actually used him on call since, in the last five months since we finished. But I want to say that, you know, if we're not deploying, it doesn't mean he doesn't come out of the car. When I'm on shift with him, I'm out of the car a ton to keep up with our training. All the skills that we learned could be perishable for him. So, you know, sometimes grab guys from the shift, they'll hide in the woods. We'll go and look for them. We'll have guys throw like knives in the grass and we'll look for them. And as I said, and starting January second, we'll start the six-week narcotics school, which will also receive a certification from, nationally from the same organization. Thank you.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
So at this point, I'd like to introduce Officer Forsyte to roll out an opportunity to round out the K-9 program for, for the department.
Hello.
Hi, hello.
I'm Officer Forsyte, as Chief said. So today I'm proposing a community resource dog. I know you've probably seen these other, other communities such as Rentham with their K-9 Cruiser, or most recently, K-9 Mitch in Norfolk. That's actually where I came up with the idea for this and it kind of inspired me. K-9 Mitch is named after my cousin who was killed in a motorcycle accident. So that kind of opened my eyes to this whole entire program and what better place to bring this program than the Town Milis. So right now, the, we have been approved for a grant for the Norfolk District Attorney's Office for fifteen thousand dollars. This funding would pay for the dog training over at GoFeet, Golden Opportunities for Independence, right in Walpole. We also have drafted additional grants, which would be roughly twenty thousand dollars, and this would be for reoccurring costs up to twenty thousand dollars. This will be submitted later on this month. Like Officer Sullivan said, the Milis Police Working Dog Fund was established in two thousand and twenty-two. Any funds that'll go into that will also support this community resource dog, be it leashes, collars, treats, anything that goes along with that. So these, these are just some of the goals and objectives. These community resource dogs are CRDs. Can assist officers working with individuals who have, you know, anger management issues, aggressive behaviors, and other antisocial contact. So this dog would be a golden retriever. It'd be super social. You could go up and pet it. This would increase empathy and compassion with these dogs and assist officers with individuals of domestic violence or any sort of major crimes and whatnot. This would then decrease retaliation violence and improve self-esteem for these people. The dogs can also assist officers with individuals who are socially disconnected from their supporters. It would also help residents of Milis stay connected and supportive of networks. We're all about community policing. We have a lot of young officers, so this would only, you know, attract more young kids or people who maybe might not want to come up and talk to us, but if there's a dog standing right there, come up and pet and kind of talk to us. And it just reduce, reduce the overall anxiety, not only for the residents of Milis, but, you know, as police and fire, we do see a lot of tragic events and we do need the, the same thing for us as well. As well as other town employees. So the community resource dog would play a huge role within the schools. The, these dogs have been shown to lower blood pressure, anxiety, provide physical stimulation, and ways to distract students from fears and anxieties, you know. These dogs connect with people in a way that other people can't connect. That's one of the, the major things that I've, when I've talked to K-9 Mitch's handlers, that it's wildly successful with these, these, these kids, these kids in school. They ask to immediately see Mitch if they're ever going through a crisis or whatnot, and it's just a perfect opportunity. Also emotional and mental health benefits. Myself and the town clinician, Amy Leone, we've worked together. It'd be a co-response for, for her and I. This would allow her and I to go in schools as well as on calls at people's residence or, or anything around town. That's about it.
Excellent. That's very exciting.
Yes.
All right, now for all the small print involved.
Can I ask one question before you continue?
Sure.
I don't know who would actually answer it. It might be you, but for the Milis Police Working Dog Fund, is that something that we need to be publicizing that might need some contributions or are we okay at the moment?
So we're dynamite at the moment.
Okay.
K-9 Nitro has his own Instagram account. And we're, we're in partnership with him right now currently. When, when that account got established in May, right, we generated, how much is it? Twenty? Somewhere around twenty grand.
Oh, okay, okay.
We do get a lot of donations and the Treasurer's Office was kind enough to allow us to make a link because a lot of people would just wanted to utilize their ATM cards. So that expedited it, made it much easier for us not to handle, handle any of the money, just go right into the account, so.
Oh, great.
It's, it's been working out phenomenal.
Okay, good.
But I think this is a great opportunity to, to round out the program and legitimately dress, address people of all ages throughout the community. A lot, we have a lot of inquiries to, they want to see Nitro. They want to pet Nitro. Probably not a good idea, right? But if we had a community resource dog, he would definitely certainly help fill, fill that want and need from, from most of the, the community. In terms of funding, not looking for any from the town. What I'm, what we're looking for is to deliver this presentation to you folks and hopefully you guys support us moving forward with the grant that's in the draft mode right now for the twenty thousand dollars. And move forward with developing the policies, procedures, job description for the community resource dog, and reach back out to various five oh one, three Cs that indicated they wanted to contribute. So all that has kind of been put on hold until we delivered this presentation to you guys.
Okay. Excellent. So are you looking for an official vote of support?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Before we do that, do you guys have other questions?
Nope.
No, I don't.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. So there's a, I know that there is a dog at the school already, which is, I don't know if they have that, if the dog is there permanently to a grant or how that works. Do you know anything about it? But I will say it's been wildly successful. I know that. And they, and I know, you know, obviously, mental health issues are at an all-time high, so I think this is a fantastic idea personally.
I think with the school dog, you have to be in the school.
That's what I was going to say.
Whereas we have the luxury, or not the luxury of, of going into the people's homes.
Right.
When they're having a difficult time, whereas they're not, they don't have that ability to do that. So, and, you know, it, it really connects the dots between us as police officers, our town clinician, and a dog, so.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that it would be one or the other. I think having another one is great. I think they've shown like what a help this is. And so, right, being able to get out with the community, helping our mental health here at Town Hall even maybe would be, is great for everyone. I think it's great, I think it's great for.
We could use a dog in here.
For so many, for so many reasons. I think it's an awesome, awesome idea, so just.
I don't think there are enough dogs in the world to help us over here, but it's a good start.
I didn't want to say that, but it is a good start, but it is, yeah, it's great.
All right, so I'm not exactly sure what motion we'll make, but I'll try this. I move that we support the police department's effort to acquire a community resource dog. Does that work?
Works.
All right.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to support the Milis Police Department in acquiring a community resource dog. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Better with making motions on contracts for these numbers.
Probably like April-ish.
I just, I want to take the opportunity to thank Chief, Matt Sullivan, Forsyte. This police department, as you know, I stood up here a million times. I'm, I'm the biggest supporter, anything they ever need, donations, whatever. You know, we're very lucky in Milis, you know, with our officers. They're out there every day. They're working hard. I've walked by the K-9 car, he barks, so, but that's, you know, he, you know, he's being used. And, and Matt's a great, a K-9 officer, and this will be another great addition to this town. Recently, I want to thank the chief, they had an open house. I think it was really nice. The station looks great. We have offices at, above and beyond, and we're very lucky in this community, both police and fire. Both chiefs work phenomenally together. So thank you for, for their, for their work, their hard work and their dedication and devotion to this town. So thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Good night.
All right, so next we have Mr. McKay. It's not intimidating at all.
I don't know which one is first, but all these contracts are all approved at the November Town Meeting. So they just need to be, you have to ratify them so that the town administrator can sign the contracts.
Does it matter? Is PFAS first? Do you want the list?
Sure, whatever you.
Does it helps to, him to go with the list? I don't know if it helps you.
So we'll have to take votes on these, each one, right?
Can we just do one big motion at the end for all of them?
That's up to my, I think.
I, I think you can. I think if, if they're all listed, you can vote to approve all.
I'll write them down as I hear about them.
There you go. All right.
So the first one is for the, the design treatment plant piloting and polluting, design of the well three treatment plant, and that's in the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And that is from Kleinfelter Northeast Inc. And the second contract is, that's the, is going to help us with disputing our water permit. And it's called the Water Management Act Support Service, and that's the amount of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we had a roundtable today about PFAS, and I have to bring it to your attention. It's not going good. The EPA is ready to come out with their, their ruling on PFAS. And it could be out any minute now. And we were told that, watch the news because they find out before, you know, we'll get the, the notice on it. What they're, they're going to start to regulate, they're going to increase the regulation on PFOS and PFOA. Both of them are the fiery substance that they use, the chemicals and stuff like that. And unfortunately, both of those chemicals in all our wells are at the highest levels. And that puts us, at each well, it puts us, you know, some at the five and some at the, over the ten percent. We just hit well six, went over the ten pots per trillion. So now we're testing that every month. So we have to, as long as it doesn't go over twenty pots per trillion. The, the scary part of most of it is they're, they're going to regulate them, either they're going to add them to the PFAS six and make a PFAS eight or ten, but, or they may make them, give them their own MCL. And what an MCL is, it has its own chemical where it can't exceed a certain amount. And if that happens, that, that's going to be, for us, I mean, we have a well that's almost, you know, and I'm going to get, I'm going to get into that in one second, but, because that's going to eliminate all that. I mean, it, it's being designed and built to eliminate all PFAS issues at wells one and two. But then now that they're coming out and a big thing, it's, it's getting into the sewer and it treatment plants. Because don't forget, any, any water, when you flush your toilets or you run it down, you drain, and it goes into the sewer treatment plant, it's not removing any PFAS. So it's traveling all the way to the treatment plants. And once they're not treating it there, it's just getting discharged into the Charles River and it's going all through the, the loop again. Now, what they're going to do with people in septic systems, because all that, again, you flush your toilet, it goes back into the ground. It's, you're doing nothing to remove it. They may have a little something to do, they're going to address wells and stuff like that. And I think that the big thing about wells testing, if you test it and you exceed the amount, then you may have to shut your well down. I don't know that for sure, but I, there's going to be some regulation on that. So once I get it, I'll make sure you all get it. But it, it's coming and it's going to be out before the beginning of the year. So that's why this crucial aspect of getting well three ready. Not saying we're going to do it, but it's just, let's get it ready and let's find out if it's a feasible thing for us to do.
How long until one and two come online? Ballpark it.
It's going to be.
It'll take a season.
It'll be next summer.
June, July.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this whole one of these, this is, this is what was delivered today. This is what you get for six million dollars.
Doesn't look like much.
Well, there's going to be a building built around it.
Oh, well, that's better.
Lovely. I say that it matters. A lot of these in the basement of all my buildings.
So that's, the water will go through those, it'll get treated, they'll go through the carbon filters and stuff like that. And they'll, the manifold pipes will all get dispersed. Anytime anyone wants to take a look at this building, please let me know and I'll be more than happy to take anyone who meets you there. Dave will be there. It's coming along. It's quicker, it's right on time, so I say June, July.
This is ours? This picture is actually ours?
This is ours. I took this today. I took this, this afternoon. And we're going to talk about a couple of issues, you know, with this in a little while, but I want you to know, it, it is coming along. All the material for the building, the roof, the walls, everything. I can't believe it's there. We're not waiting for anything. It's, 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 the piping, it's all, so it's, it's a good company. So June, July, I hope.
Good.
So do you want to, we're going to continue?
Yeah, we can do them all.
Do them all. Okay, next, so.
The next one is the Water Management Act Support Services?
Oh, you just did that one, right?
Yeah, I did that one as part of that.
Okay. Okay, Stumpes.
I'm going to save, save the contingency one for discussion after the, the vote. The Stumpes Tree Service, that's a MAPC contract, and that's not to exceed the amount of seventy-one thousand, twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. We have those funds. I checked with Carol today. Those are, those are there. And that's ideally. contracted to take trees down. That's something different than what we're going to talk about in a little while, but that, that's for our yearly contract for that. It took a long time to get it, and we finally got it. Stumpies is a good company, we've worked with them many, many times in the past, we had a great company, Pathfinder did us a real good job, but he just didn't get the bid, and that's how it rolls. So that one is not to exceed amount of $71,025.50. The next is for the pickup truck, and that, it will be to Liberty Chevrolet, again, that's under the MAPC, same one that the police buy all their stuff, it's the same contract, and that is not to exceed amount of $65,940, and that will be split up in four different, the four different departments that you see on that. And the biggest discussion probably, other than the town meeting, was the air compressor. I mean, it is a tow behind air compressor, it operates on jackhammers and everything else, and that is in the amount of $26,966.98. The good thing about, almost all of this, we just talked about, everything's here, and once you sign the contract, Mike signs the contract, we can get them delivered.
Excellent.
So, I think that's it with the contract, oh, not to.
The camera system.
Well, that, that's, I think we should talk about those two separately, because that's a.
That's separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
All right, I'll make.
Sorry, and the other stump piece goes with that, right?
That goes with this, yeah.
Okay, so sorry, go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion that we ratify the contracts and authorize the town administrator to sign the contracts with Kleinfelder for $165,000, and for the PFAS design of well three, the $56,864 water permit, sign a contract with Stumpies, not to exceed $71,025.50 for tree removal, sign a contract with Liberty Chevy for $65,940 for a truck, to be split appropriately as voted at town meeting, sign a contract with ATS Equipment for $26,966.98 for an air compressor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the DPW contracts as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So, lastly, we have two other things that the board have to address, as you are, you know, you're the overseer of the DPW project being built for the PFAS plant, you take the role of the permanent building committee on this issue. Town administrator can sign up to $10,000, just as the chair of the permanent building committee. I added this in here, the $9,500, I'm going to ask you not to say Stumpies, I'm just going to ask you to say not to exceed, because I want to get three bids for this, I think it's only fair for the, because this is a PFAS plant.
How much was that one?
This one's, so it would be not to exceed 9,500.
Thank you.
So, what happened is, when we built the building, if you know where we're talking about, it's where the old dog barn used to be, in the old water building, there's a big hill there, and as we started taking stuff around, the erosion of the hill started to come down. And it was, there's a row of trees, big huge pine trees, that we're afraid if we don't get rid of them now, they're going to come down, and they're going to damage this, these brand-new tanks that you just looked at, and it was not part, it was not in the actual bid process. So it's not a change order, it's a town request, and that would be in the $9,500 range. The second was a camera system, and as part of the DPW project, the permanent building committee gave us, like I say, approved $31,100 for the camera system that will take care of the site itself. It takes care of the building, it takes care of the outbuilding, the garage, the gas tanks, and we added a new camera to the system that was approved at the last Tuesday night meeting. It's going to be out, if you drive through, you can see we put the flagpole up, there's a flagpole out, and you can just see, it's there, and we're going to add a camera, and that's going to get a picture of the entrance to the water street, and it's going to get a picture of all the buses. Because with the, you know, recent stalling of catalytic converters.
Yeah.
We feel, and I'll talk about, a little bit more about the, you know, we've already gone through this with the chief, we've already done this in the town, we've already had about eight, nine, 10, this has already happened to us.
Oh.
You know, here, the catalytic converters have been stolen, and it's cost the town a lot of money. So at least if we have that camera system in. So the reason why it took so long for us to get to this point was when we first looked at it, we were just going to use the same type of system that we had. And, you know, Jim Donovan, you know, he's a very intelligent person, and he's very much into this stuff, and he knows what he's talking about, and he advised us to, you know, slow down, let's look at it, and he's looking at, if you remember, he got a fiber optic grant, and the fiber optic grant is going to go from the Norfolk Water Pump Station, and it's going to get the sewer station, and it's going to come up Plain Street, and it's going to go all the way to the DPW garage, and that way we'll be able to put cameras down there, you know, eventually, and we're going to be able to eliminate the Comcast, all that stuff. Then, in the last couple of weeks, we were involved with the police in the camera system that they want to install. So we met with the police chief, and he's very much in favor of this. They will oversee it all, the cameras will be, I mean, the DPW will be able to watch our cameras, but these are going to be installed, that they're going to have a new control room, and these are going to be right in his office, that the dispatcher's going to be able to watch them 24/7.
We don't want to get too much in detail of their placement and everything else for obvious reasons.
Right, and that's why we didn't send you, the town council told us, we could not send out the packet that we have, because it does show all that.
Yeah, yeah. It would be detrimental to our security measures to have that as a public document.
But we never, again, with this building here, because of the cost, we were a little reluctant to, and maybe it was a short sight on our part, that we did not look into a camera system far. But this is the time to do it, we're upgrading the software, it's Genetek, anybody ever heard, it's supposed to be one of the better servers that for that type of camera system, they'll be able to use it, when they put their cameras on, they're going to be able to get the licenses to download everything on it. So we do need to get the PFAS treatment plant building, and the treatment plant at, the Angeles Treatment Plant, and the cost of that will be $25,000. So again, I would ask that, it's a town request, and I would ask that both of, the 9,500 be taken out of contingencies along with the $25,000. On the second page that I gave you, I gave you a breakdown of what's actually contingency money's been spent.
What's in, when you hand it out.
I just handed it.
Oh, right, right, right. So, I just have a quick question. So, this 9,500 and not to exceed, not to exceed both 25,000, that was not town meeting approved?
It doesn't have to be?
No, but it wasn't.
It was not, no, you're correct.
That's why he kept it separate.
Well, indirectly it was, it was part of the project, it was part of the project, this is contingency on the building project.
It's a $6 million project.
Yeah.
This is part of those funds.
And they can't spend money without our permission to spend it out of the contingency over a certain amount.
So it's no additional funds being requested.
Got it.
So anything that you see that's written in red, and it has the red number beside it, we've only paid one change order for $8,629. The second one that you approved at, and that came, that was like $28,000, you originally approved, and it came in at 16, and would be these two, and then we would have that amount left.
Yeah.
Okay.
If these two approved.
All right, I'll make a motion to use the PFAS water treatment plant's contingency funds to pay 95,000 for tree removal, vendor to be determined, and.
9,500.
Oh, 9,500, I'm sorry, and integrated systems for a camera.
Wow.
You got it, no. 9,500 for tree removal, and integrated systems for a camera placement for $25,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the use of contingency funds for the tree removal as well as the camera system. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I will keep you updated every like month or so, or every two months, I'll send you the, you know, where we are with costs and everything else. Knock on wood, it's coming in so fast, I just jinx myself.
Yes, for me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Nice, quick meeting, see?
And almost for us.
Very nice.
Jim, can I still, yeah, I was going to say, my, thank you, sir. So the next thing that we have here are board and committee liaise on updates. Does anybody have anything?
I do. Do you want to go?
I've got nothing.
You've got nothing?
Yeah.
I went to the.
The kids are ours.
I went to a really great meeting, actually, I went to a school committee, had a meeting that was packed, and it was all about extended day.
Oh.
And that they've seen quite a bit of, there's not so many people since COVID. So, I think they had, peak COVID, 170 signed up, and now they have like 110, so they have an incredible shortfall. So they raised the rates 15%, and they're trying to find the rest of the money to cover. And it was well attended, but I have to say, all the parents that were there, I thought it was going to be like, you know, what are you doing to us, and this kind of thing, but I have to say, it was incredible. The parents that were there were so appreciative of the program, and how it's changed their lives, I think it comes to like $4 or $5 an hour or something, I mean, it's below, below, obviously, but they didn't really blink, I don't want to say they didn't blink, but they were very appreciative of just the 15% because it's not going to cover, 30% will cover.
Oh, wow.
So they need to find another 15. So they're thinking 15 this year, maybe 15 next, and that they should be good. And then the other interesting thing was they have a waiting list, but they only have, I think, six or a handful of people for the waiting list, but they can't get help.
Yeah.
And it would, even if they could get help, it would all really be a wash, they wouldn't make anything to cover the shortfall, it would just cover. But they're all going to bring, they're going to talk about that with us, I believe, at the tri board.
Okay.
But it was, it was just a great meeting.
It's all self-funding, right?
Yes, well, it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
But it's not.
It's not, but it's.
Right now it isn't.
Right.
But it's, yeah, historically it is.
Our school-age childcare bounced back pretty well compared to our early ed, early learning, preschools aren't filling well, but the school age that we run's filled up nicely. Different mindset, though, people are taking two days, three days, we have very few five-day kids, so that would be something.
Right.
That is a change, but finding staff is the key issue.
Mm-hmm.
If you can find them, it's, there's people out there that are looking for the staff, you know?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Any others?
Nope, not mine.
No, we canceled ours because we didn't have a quorum.
Okay, and which one was that?
Economic Development.
Okay, all right. I had the permanent building committee meeting, it was primarily to interview for a new candidate, and as you know, tonight we appointed Jeremy Stahl. We also had John Proctor and Jim Duffy, who were at the meeting and were also interested in a position on the board. So, we are going to have them as the associate members that I had mentioned earlier, so they'll be serving with the rest of the committee members. I think that's all I had, too. All right. The next thing we have is the approval of draft minutes, we've got three draft minutes. Do you guys all get a chance to go through those?
Mm-hmm. You didn't get, you did not get the 1110, that's the town meeting minutes.
Oh.
Which are really short, it's like a paragraph, but I didn't send them to you.
All right.
So I'll just don't talk about those, and I'll send those on 1219.
Okay, so I did have just a small edit on the 7th, but I was thinking we could, if you guys read through these, we could approve these pending the minor edits.
What's your edits? Yep, I agree with that, though, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of November 11th and November 14th.
7.
I'm sorry, 7th and 14th, pending the minor edits.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 17th and November 14th, pending some minor edits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so next, I'll just make the motion because I'm talking anyway, so I move, I move that we go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, SEIU, AFSCME, professional firefighters of Millis Local Number 4704. When we emerge from executive session, it will be just for the purpose of adjourning this meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session, I will poll the board. Ms. Rosenfeld?
Aye.
And Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we are now in executive session. Thank you, everybody, and I wanted to just give a quick thanks to David Stedman, Wesley Kotay, and Shelley Pitts of Millis Community Media, thank you very much for running everything tonight, we appreciate all you do, and good luck to Zach. Thank you.
Bye, Scott.